I'm going to call this meeting into order. Do we have any closed session reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, nothing to report.
Thank you. Scott, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Littler, here. Councilmember Kavanaugh, here. Councilmember Judge, here. Mayor Protem Rhodes, here. Mayor Thomas, here.
Are there any items for agenda review? Okay.
He moves that I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Call for vote.
Second.
Call for vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next first item on the agenda is item two, public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item three B one, presentation by Economic Development Collaborative of Ventura County, broadband strategic project, and project lead Vivian Vasquez is here to present this item.
Hi, good evening, Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to spend a few minutes talking about broadband. I see some familiar faces from our broadband work previously, but I just wanted to give a brief overview just to give you all a sense of what we're working on. I'm Vivian Vasquez, I work with the Economic Development Collaborative, and I'm also here on behalf of the Broadband Consortium of the Pacific Coast. And I'll be giving a brief informational update on our work on the broadband strategic project. You all are lucky in that you're one of the last cities that we're visiting to do this presentation, so we actually have some substantive work that we've been doing. And we already are pretty far along, so I'm excited to share that with you all. I'm happy to take any questions at the end. In terms of the information I'll be sharing, I'll talk a little bit about how broadband for all came to be. Then I'll talk a little bit about our project plan, the activities we started to carry out, what our timeline looks like for the rest of the strategy, and what those outcomes will be hopefully for your city, and then also what we'd like you to consider. In terms of legislation supporting broadband, as you all may know, there have been many laws passed, especially since COVID, and it became so important for us to think about internet connectivity and for work, for healthcare, for so many aspects of life, broadband is so essential. It's become a utility that's almost just as important as any other utility that we have. And so this funding has really been meant to highlight the importance of that and making sure that our infrastructure is there to make sure that broadband is accessible to all. So a lot of this funding has been allocated for that, and through this funding, the California Broadband for All, we've been able to ascertain some of this funding to be able to do the strategy project for Ventura County. In terms of the project plan and activities, part of this is convening. So what we've been doing since September, early fall, we've been convening a working group under VCOG to bring together all the different cities, and we have representatives from Simi Valley, we have representatives from all the different municipalities in the county, bringing them together to talk about what are your opportunities and challenges when it comes to expanding broadband in your area, and how can we coordinate together and kind of make sure that we're all working from the same page and making sure that we're as strategic and aligned as possible. So we've been convening for over six months now, we have those monthly convenings to have those conversations. Nextly, we're also doing a lot of data collection, which I will talk further about in a few slides, but we are doing some need surveys out to the community, and that's something we'll definitely would love your support on, is making sure that we get enough of a representative sample of Simi Valley to know where the areas that we really need to focus on when it comes to broadband, and if there are any areas that are really underserved when it comes to internet access and making sure that we focus on those. So we're doing a need survey, and then we're also doing a speed test, which is just one simple click on a website called speedtest.net, and that just ascertains your upload and download speed at any point when it comes to your phone or whatever device that you're on. So we're collecting both those informations right now, trying to get a sense of where things are in Ventura County and using that in collaboration with a lot of the internet service providers' data about what they're offering in Ventura County. So through that data collection process, that's how we're identifying the priority areas for broadband, which is all informing part of our strategy. So using the data collection and also some of the convenings that we've been bringing together, we've started to also focus on mapping as well. So we have a map expert on our team who's been working to bring all this together into really beautiful images that help us understand what are the areas that we need to focus on and how can we make sure this is also open access so folks understand what's going on in their community. Last two points here, coordination and outcomes. So we're focusing also on thinking about policy recommendations when it comes to that final strategy report that I'll talk about shortly, and then also thinking about the roadmap for the region, but also within that larger roadmap, what does that look like for each city individually, and what would that look like for Simi Valley when it comes to broadband? In terms of the timeline, like I said, you all are very lucky, we're already very far along this timeline at this point, which is great, and we've been able to succeed in a lot of these different steps. So into the fall and the winter, we were working on the municipal meetings and those working group meetings and having conversations about what the needs were. We've started briefing many councils in the area, we were grateful to be able to speak with you all today, and we've already started pushing out those need surveys and speed tests into the community, and we're in the data collection phase of this project right now. A little later into the spring, we'll be doing more of the analysis, and then I'll starting to pull together this final draft of a regional strategy report, which will inform both the county level, but then also, like I said, there'll be pullout chapters for each of the cities, so there will be one for Simi Valley as well to explain your specific story and needs and resources that are specific to the city. In terms of outcomes for the region, what we're hoping is that we'll be able to deliver a comprehensive document that will allow Simi Valley and then also the county as a whole to think about what the actual gaps are in terms of broadband and what we can do to make sure, as there's a lot of federal funding coming down, that we're ready and well positioned to apply for that. Then we're also thinking about in that strategy, how to prioritize across the cities and make sure there's not redundancy, but also that we're focusing on the areas that really need, in terms of thinking about equity, making sure that there's a focus on the disadvantaged communities. In terms of GIS mapping, as I mentioned, we really want to make sure that that data that we're collecting is also available and also complementing a lot of the ISP data that has been published. In terms of the planning results, a lot of this is going to be setting us up for what's going to be coming in the next year or two, as I mentioned about broadband. So all of this strategy is really setting up the foundation for conversations that will continue for the next several years. In terms of what we're asking for your city, we're not asking for any funding or money, we're just asking for your support in this process, and you all have already been wonderful in offering your staff time and supporting that through the working group. But we really would like support in terms of the data collection process right now, so we have pushed out through, all the cities have been really helpful with social media and other methods, but if there are any other community groups that you're aware of or other stakeholders that could help us push out the need survey and speed tests and make sure that we have sufficient data, that would be greatly appreciated. And as we finish up that data collection process, that will help us make sure that our analysis is really specific to Simi Valley and representative of it. And then lastly, just your support and coordination as we think about the regional strategy and pushing it out in the next few months, once that's completed. And that is it for me, are there any questions that I can help answer?
Councilmember Littler.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vivian, for your presentation. Of course, I have seen you present every month at VCOG, and I appreciate that. And of course, we have that JPA that's being formed, which is VCOG and C economic, CDC, EDC, EDC, to say it in the correct order, EDC, and of course, the broadband collaborative. But my question is, and I guess I wasn't aware of, is I was looking at, one of the first slides you put up was some of the legislative powers that are to be, and I noticed that SB 156 authorizes JPAs, which is what we just referenced, to issue bonds for development, and I don't think I was aware of that, per se. It is, I know that heretofore, there's been grant monies that have been received from the CPC to get this started, and we like grant monies a lot, and there's supposed to be lots of theoretically grant money from the federal level, et cetera. Do you envision that there will be a need for bonds? Is that part of the conversation at all right now, or do we see it all right now being done with grants, granting?
That's a great question, I'm not aware of any current bonds right now, but I will, I don't know, okay. I'm shaking heads for my fellow colleagues over there, so I'm not aware of any right now, but that may be.
So right now, we want to deal with all free money theoretically, but that's, okay. Well, granted money, let me say that, excuse me. Okay, thank you. And this is actually a question, but I want you to be part of it, for our C manager, Brian Gabriel. Of course, we have in Simi Valley internally, this Sci-Fi project, which is supposed to provide high-speed internet for everyone. But my question, and I didn't know that I really realized, does that include the islands, and does that include the Knowles? Do we have areas of our, that's not theoretically in the city, that is not included in that project?
If we got, if Sci-Fi received permission from the county, then they would be putting it into the island areas. And I know they've had conversations with the county, but I don't know if that's been resolved yet. Going to the Knowles would be challenging, just because of the street layout, the size, the width of the street, not knowing the infrastructure in the street, obviously.
Sure.
With all the trenching going on. So it'll be a little bit more challenging in the Knowles because we don't have that information, and unless they're able to provide it, that might be.
And so that, so that area of our city area might be particularly appropriate to gather data for this project.
Yeah, now, that being said, the map that we have provided to Sci-Fi of you need to provide fiber in all of these areas is the map of the city without necessarily the pockets there.
Without those pockets.
So it's a continuing discussion with that.
So just, you know, the city of Simi Valley has five islands, and anyway, areas, okay. Okay, thank you, I just wanted, so that is, okay, so that's something to put in your pocket.
Okay, that's helpful to know in terms of areas, we should make sure are included in that.
I just want to be sure that they're not, because I think that's the whole point, is that this is about really including the entire county and areas that might be inadvertent, not be left out or not have access.
Yeah, I mean, they've done a great job, and Bill back there, Bill Simmons back there, is a job, how many years you been at this, Bill? Ten years on providing broadband to Ventura County. There are areas of Ventura County that don't, that, one, they don't have fiber, and two, they have barely any other type of connectivity. So we are very blessed in Simi Valley that all of our commercial industrial areas are served by fiber. And we have telecom providers that have provided a good network in our residential area. So we're very blessed, but there are other areas of county that are not even close to what we have. So we're fortunate to even pile Sci-Fi on top of that, where every property will have fiber to the house or to the building, which is going to make it even better for us. And the work that Bill and his team have been doing has been huge, because you've got a lot of area to cover.
Oh, I'm, yes, absolutely. Well, thank you, Vivian, appreciate your work.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item three C one, informational presentation by YES Advisory Board member Gloria Bowman.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, and members of the City Council. My name is Gloria Bowman. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. As Chair of the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board, YES, I have the honor of presenting our annual informational report. The Youth Employment Service Advisory Board, established in 1982, is comprised of 15 members and up to three alternates that include representatives of government agencies, schools, employers, and community members at large to discuss employment issues that relate to youth. Simi Valley is one of the few cities in the region that offers this type of service to prepare our young people for the jobs of the 21st century. Our board's continued focus has been on workforce development of youth and connecting them with various career pathways, as well as promoting the hiring of teens and young adults as they enter the economic ladder. Now I'll go over a few programs held to accomplish these. Annually, we co-host a summer workshop series at the Simi Valley Public Library that last year included the following. One, the entering of the workforce with a focus on entrepreneurship workshop. It covered employment options for teens, workplace ethics and safety, work permits and types of jobs permitted, as well as job readiness. Participants also heard from two local teen entrepreneurs about their experiences. Two, building a resume and/or brag sheet for jobs, college, and scholarship applications workshop, focused on resume writing basics, what is a brag sheet, and how it differs from a resume, and what young job seekers could do to build an impressive resume and/or brag sheet. Participants also were provided small group assistance by volunteers from the business community and YES Advisory Board in drafting a minimum of two work history items. Three, the interview skills workshop, covered how to successfully complete an application, appropriate interview attire, basics of confident communication, common interview questions and how to answer them, and the interview follow-up process. Volunteers from local businesses conducted multiple mock interviews and provided valuable feedback with all participants. And four, using LinkedIn learning to gain job skills workshop. This was led by the Simi Valley Public Library staff and YES coordinator, focused on the following, how to access LinkedIn learning, search and complete online training courses offered, as well as how training benefits job seekers. Last spring, we added a YES Let's Talk Money Financial Literacy Workshops for Teens and Young Adults, a four-part workshop series. Participants learned a range of concepts, from opening a bank account required to receive direct deposit paychecks, to general budgeting, building credit, saving to retire early, investing basics, and more. This well-attended workshop series was developed by a committee composed of YES Advisory Board members, Bank of America's Better Money Habits Education Team members, and a local student, Shriya Julakante, a local teen author of A Teen's Guide to Investing: How to Make the Magic of Compounding Work for You. Last November, we also hosted a volunteer fair at the Boys and Girls Club of Moore Park in Simi Valley for community members of all ages. The free event was designed to connect local nonprofits with potential volunteers. Our major program is teaching essential interview skills workshops. Last month, over 1,200 local students received training on work permits and labor laws, application completion, digital first impression, follow-up procedures, networking basics, the interview process and common questions, resume writing, workplace ethics, and best practices on leaving a job. Each participant also received a comprehensive, up-to-date supplemental interview skills workshop handbook to keep. Our newly-formed entrepreneurship committee has been working on developing an entrepreneurship-focused podcast series featuring successful entrepreneurs and topics to help budding entrepreneurs in launching their business ideas. We hope to have this 10-part series ready to release later this spring. Our first job in Career Expo was held in 1987. Over the past 36 years, more than 26,000 youth have been served. Our 37th annual event is scheduled on Saturday, April 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We will be holding the event in a true library takeover fashion, excuse me, for the third year at the Simi Valley Public Library. We are co-hosting the library takeover event with the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce and Simi Valley Public Library, and sponsored by the Rotary Club of Simi Sunrise. The free event will feature practice interviews, onsite interviews with employers, exposure to career options, internships and volunteer opportunities, assistance with completing job applications, workstations to submit online job applications, help writing resumes, and an abbreviated Let's Talk Money Financial Literacy Workshop for Teens and Young Adults, led again by student author Shriya Julakante and members of the Bank of America's Better Money Habits Education Team. Last year, more than 40 employers and organizations participated in the job there, along with more than 500 teen and adult job seekers that attended. This year, we anticipate similar numbers. Much of what our board is able to accomplish would not be possible without key collaborations with the Chamber of Commerce, the local business community, including Bank of America's Lead Program, the Simi Valley Unified School District, Rotary Club of Simi Sunrise, and numerous community volunteers. Our call to action, so to speak, is to encourage more local employers to hire youth, whether paid or as unpaid interns, to provide critical opportunities for our youth to build job skills, to offer job shadow experiences to provide youth exposure to various career opportunities, and to get involved by participating in our Job and Career Fair. Businesses with openings or that would like to share information on careers available are encouraged to register at bit.ly/2024jobfair. This results in a robust and skilled labor force. Thank you for continuing to support the work of the YES Advisory Board and YES program. We invite each of you to come and witness the work the board does by stopping by the Job and Career Fair on Saturday, April 20th, or join us at our regular board meetings at 8:15 a.m. on the third Wednesday of each month in the City Hall Community Room. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about our YES program. In front of you, you have a save-the-date card, which goes out to our local businesses, and you also have our up-to-date interview skills workshop. When the students come through, those 1,200 students, this is the book they get, it was completely remodeled this year, so it has everything that's up to date. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mayor Protem Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gloria, great to see you.
Thank you, Rock.
One of the things that I miss about being up here is that I don't get to participate in the committee any longer, and the years there, working with you, were fantastic. Great upgrade.
Thank you.
Well done. This book is fantastic to present at the schools, because it's, one, easy to read, but even better now, updated, so thank you guys so much for that.
Put that onto Kristin.
The thing that was being discussed when I left the committee was the financial workshops, and I'm so excited that those got off the ground, because that is just as important a part of this new job learning curve. And so to get them not only set to get the job, but then to deal with the finances afterwards, I think that's a great add. And I'm super excited that that got put in. And then, one other comment, I just had the opportunity for the city to review about 70 resumes, and many of them could have used the workshop on resume writing, and so. And so, anyway, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Councilmember Lidster.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually going to ask Gloria, how long have you been involved on this committee? Because it's been a few years.
Probably 12 years.
That's what I thought. And I just wanted to be sure that you got some commendation for your time. And if I remember correctly, you are often one of the booths looking for jobs as far as lifeguards. Is there any — is that —
Last year, it was that I was with the City of Calabasas. I retired on September 1st, so I will not be there with the City of Calabasas. I don't know if they will be attending or not. They are remodeling their pool, and their last update is that their pool will not be ready until mid-April. I don't know if that's going to be true or not. So I'm no longer with the City of Calabasas.
Well, congratulations on your retirement. I see that you're certainly not sitting idle.
No. 28 years as a lifeguard was enough.
That's — Thank you, thank you for all you've done to save lives and to help people progress in their lives.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Well, thank you very much for the report. Great report. And, of course, thank you for all the time and effort you put into this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank the rest of the committee for us, too.
I shall. We have a meeting Wednesday. Nothing further? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 4, Public Statements. During this Agenda Item 4, the City Council will hear public statements on the first 10 persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first 10 persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will be called to speak during Agenda Item Number 6, which is a continuation of Agenda Item 4. Agenda Items 4 and 6 are times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for public statement item 4 for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
Please proceed.
Thank you. The first speaker is Brian Nines.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and city staff. My name is Brian Nines, and I'm a Senior Account Manager for W M. Tonight, I would like to start off by thanking the City Council once again for their unanimous photo confidence and extension to our franchise agreement within the city. Our local team is proud to continue to service here in Simi Valley, and we've had great feedback from our residents who share with us that they are enjoying the new benefits and rates from this agreement. I'd like to also thank our five-star Chamber of Commerce. This past month, at their annual Salute to Excellence Dinner, W M was recognized as Simi Valley's Business of the Year. As you know, many of our team, like myself, live right here in Simi Valley, and we are honored to be recognized once again for this achievement. For the community, I'd like to report that we had a successful landfill day yesterday as 979 trucks passed through the Simi Valley landfill. As trucks were leaving, Simi residents had the opportunity to take home free compost. Our next free compost giveaway will be May 19, and we hope to see many more of you there. W M continues to be a proud community partner, and I am just grateful to be a part of it. Thank you again to the City Council and residents of Simi Valley.
Scott Mosher.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Scott Mosher with the Boys and Girls Club of Moore Park in Simi Valley at 2850 Lemon Drive, Simi Valley. I'm here to speak in favor of Agenda Item 7.3, requesting funds for emotional well-being for the youth that we serve in Simi Valley, as long as — excuse me — as well as scholarships for youth in need to access our services. The Boys and Girls Clubs currently service about 784 young people in Simi Valley. 78% of those from low-income families qualify for free and reduced lunch through the Simi Valley Unified School District. While I realize that the funds being requested are no longer specifically ARPA funds, I feel that our request is consistent with what those funds were about and certainly serves specific needs resulting of COVID-19. 100% of the funds will be used for Simi Valley youth and will make a significant impact over the next three years. Just want to thank you so much for your consideration and your continued support. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Just real quick. Thank you for being here, Brian. And didn't you — or didn't we have a Driver of the Year in Simi Valley? So congratulations to him, too. It was very nice to honor W M and all you guys have done here for us. And Boys and Girls Club, I think we always support you guys. You do a great job. So thank you both for being here.
That's all we have.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings on the consideration of matters presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the City Clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the City Clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which a card was submitted for this public testimony, item 5, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. Public Hearing Item 5A, Consideration of a City Initiating Municipal Code Text Amendment to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to establish development standards and modify design guidelines for residential accessory structures, a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environment Equality Act and introduction of an ordinance. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1355, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for City Initiating Municipal Code Text Amendment to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to establish development standards and modify design guidelines for residential accessory structures and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environment Equality Act. An Associate Planner, Alexander Klingman, and Deputy Environmental Services Director, Sean Gibson, are here to present this item.
Before we begin, are there any conflicts or expartee communications to report? Please proceed.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Thomas and City Council members. Tonight's public hearing will add a series of development code and design guideline amendments we've presented over the past few years, many of which are depicted on the screen. Many of these items shown give creative options for use of commercial residential properties with the goal of making Simi Valley an even greater place to live. Tonight's proposed amendments offer objectivity of zoning rules as it comes to non-habitable residential accessory structures. It will provide more affordable design options to homeowners, clarify size restrictions, and give options for larger structures on larger lots. It would also provide a sense of local control to react to allowances, to convert these structures to residential units as dictated by state law. To continue our presentation is Associate Planner Alex Klingman.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. Tonight, we will be discussing municipal code text amendments and design updates for residential accessory structures. The amendments presented to you this evening are in response to frequent counter inquiries from homeowners who want to construct larger metal accessory structures, like RV garages or barns. However, the city currently has policies in place that restrict the size and material of these structures. In August of 2022, staff presented proposed code amendments for cargo containers on residential lots to the City Council. And during this meeting, staff also identified the need to update current accessory structure standards to allow for larger sizes and the use of metal as a material. City Council then directed staff to review the standards for potential updates. Staff took proposed changes to the Planning Commission as a discussion item in March of last year and to the Neighborhood Councils in November. The Planning Commission then heard the proposed changes in December and recommended approval to City Council with modifications as provided on Pages 1 and 2 of the staff report. The Simi Valley Municipal Code defines accessory structures as non-habitable and secondary to the residential use. These can include RV garages, workshops, barns, and storage sheds, but they are separate from accessory dwelling units and cargo containers, which have their own standards in the code. Several years ago, the city enacted policies that restricted the design and size of these structures. The policy requires that colors, materials, and roof pitch of these structures match the existing home and also restricts their size to 30% of the square footage of the house or 1,200 square feet, whichever is less. The policy also allows metal barns, when used for animal keeping, up to 2,000 square feet in size, but only in animal overlay zones. The three main purposes of the amendments tonight are to codify size and number restrictions, clarify the use of these structures, and modify non-objective design standards. Starting with size calculation, currently, the 30% size limitation is calculated based on the total square footage of the existing house, excluding garages, patio covers, and porches. The proposed amendment will codify that the 30% should be based on the first floor, including any attached garages. This would still exclude patio covers and porches. The next change will codify size limits and add options to increase the size in certain scenarios. So this table is broken down by different-sized properties. For properties that are less than one acre, the maximum allowed size would be 30% of the first story of the house and garage, up to a maximum of 1,200 square feet. An admin action could increase the size up to 2,000 square feet. For properties that are over — excuse me — that are one acre or more, the maximum allowed size would be 30% of the square footage of the first story of the house and garage, up to a maximum of 2,000 square feet. Structures can exceed the 30% up to 2,000 square feet with an admin action, and structures that exceed 2,000 square feet would need a conditional use permit. This slide shows an example on a 10,000-square-foot lot with a 2,000-square-foot house. You could have a 600-square-foot accessory structure, which is 30% of the size of the house. And if you want to exceed that, you could apply for an admin action to go up to 2,000 square feet. And another example on an approximately one-acre lot with a 3,000-square-foot house, you could have a 900-square-foot structure. And if you want to exceed that, you can go up to 2,000 square feet with an admin action or 2,000 — beyond 2,000 with a CUP. The next change will limit the number of accessory structures allowed per lot. Currently, there is no limit on the number of accessory structures that can be placed on a property, so long as they comply with setback, lot coverage, and separation requirements. This amendment would pose a restriction that on properties less than one acre, structures over 1,200 square feet would be limited to a maximum of two per lot. Properties over one acre can have a maximum of two structures over 1,200 square feet per acre. It's important to note that the 1,200-square-foot threshold applies to each individual structure. It is not a cumulative limit. So there would continue to be no limit to the number of structures less than 2,000 square feet. Currently, only barns and stables can go up to 2,000 square feet when located in an animal overlay zone. The second portion of the proposed changes would allow structures for other uses, such as RV garages, carports, or even workshops to go up to 2,000 square feet with a zoning clearance when they're within this animal overlay zone. The size could be increased beyond 2,000 square feet with a CUP and only on properties one acre or more in size. This change would allow more options for homeowners and eliminate permitting conflicts that arise from homeowners wanting to build larger metal structures for non-animal-keeping uses, like the image shown here. And the final portion of the amendments would update the existing design guidelines. Currently, accessory structures that are larger than 120 square feet are required to match colors, materials, and roof slope to the main house through the use of stucco, wood, brick, or stone, as shown here. Based on the Planning Commission's feedback and to eliminate non-objective language, the design guidelines will be updated, as shown here on the slide. Structures 500 square feet or less would need to match at least one color to the main home. Structures 500 square feet in size or over 12 feet in height would need to match one color and one material to the main home. And the roof color and material should also complement the home and include eaves. Structures on properties one acre or more or in an animal overlay zone would only need to provide eaves when the structure is over 500 square feet in size. And the last change would be to allow metal accessory structures. Currently, metal structures are restricted to animal overlay zones and only allowed for barns and stables. The proposed guidelines will be amended to allow metal to be used as a material for all accessory structures, regardless of the zone. These structures would still be required to comply with design guidelines, development standards, and the Building Code. The slide shows some examples of acceptable metal structures. This is another common request that staff gets at the counter since metal or prefab structures have become increasingly popular and tend to be more affordable than traditional structures made of wood or timber. Many prefab metal structures are available for purchase in various colors and sizes, and it makes them more cost-effective for homeowners. And in November, staff presented the proposed changes to the Neighborhood Councils and received a recommendation for approval by all except Neighborhood Council Number 2. All four Neighborhood Councils expressed their concerns regarding allowing multiple accessory structures, ADUs, and cargo containers on a single property. It was explained that currently, there is no limit to the number of accessory structures that can be built on a residential lot. However, these proposed changes aim to limit accessory structures that are more than 1,200 square feet in size. It was also explained that there are specific development standards in the code for ADUs and cargo containers that would also limit how many of these structures that you could put on a residential property. For example, only one detached ADU is allowed per lot, and only one cargo container is allowed on lots 20,000 square feet or greater in size. It's important to note that ADUs and cargo containers are completely separate from the proposed code and policy amendments, and they're subject to their own standards. The Planning Commission recommends that the City Council introduce Ordinance Number 1355 to amend the code and establish development standards and also authorize the Environmental Services Director to establish design guidelines for residential accessory structures and a determination that the amendments are exempt from CEQA. This concludes our presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alex and Sean. You made a statement in your presentation that I didn't find in the report, and so I'm trying to understand. Your statement was that the calculation was made on 30% of the first story of the house, of the primary house, but I didn't see that anywhere. Everywhere that I saw it said on the square footage of the house, so maybe I didn't read it closely enough. Can you, can you show me? I just want to know where it is. Mayor Protim Rhodes said it was there, so I believe you, but I just want you to show, so show me. I would just like to know where it is, because I missed that somehow, and I apologize.
It is also listed on, within the ordinance, on page 12.
So that's the finding, is that, okay, and that's where, I want to see it in the ordinance itself, so that's page 12?
It would be page 12, under B, size limits.
Perfect.
It would be B1.
Okay.
It describes the, for the purpose of that section, how we would calculate the square footage.
First story, okay, thank you. I'm sorry that I missed that, but I, thank you both, I appreciate that. Couple, a couple more questions, let me get back to what I had. I'm sorry, I need to get out of my document. So, I realize this discussion is about accessory units, not accessory dwelling units, and so I want to be sure to use the vernacular correctly, but in the report, and tonight you made the statement that there's no limit on the number of ADUs, accessory dwelling units, on a property as long as they are under 1,200 square feet. Well, that's actually what it, no, what it says is, it actually said, but yet you said that there is a limit.
The Development Code does have standards for accessory dwelling units, which would limit the number that would be allowed. You're allowed to have one detached accessory dwelling unit per the current code.
Okay, then I misread something, and that's why I thought, but so I misread something in the report, okay, thank you. But there, as long as, and just so I understand, as long as these accessory units are under 1,200 square feet?
So we're separating accessory dwelling units because they have their own standards, restrictions, focusing on accessory structures in general?
Sure, okay, so I shouldn't say dwelling, so accessory units, make sure I'm saying it correctly. For these accessory units, it was, no, that's not what we call it? Structures, not units, structures, okay. Accessory structures, not to be confused with a unit, they are accessory structure. If they are under 1,200 square feet, then there is no limitation. Is that accurate?
That is correct, and that is what is currently allowed per code. There are limitations, though, however, with separation, setbacks, lot coverage requirements that they would have to comply with that may limit that number.
Okay. In page 37 of this report, you have planning, you have the planning meeting minutes, and Commissioner Mayor asked if accessory, and she uses the term units, but I'll say accessory structures, so I'm being clear, have a pathway to become habitable structures or ADUs. The answer that was given is yes. So could you elaborate and explain that to me? That was what was, that was the answer that was given in the...
Per state law, you can convert any legally permitted accessory structure into an ADU. Of course, you'd have to meet current building code and convert it into a habitable structure, so conditioned space, but that, that may be a possibility for accessory structures.
So if I understand, this is, that we're, we're codifying, or we're giving objective standards now just to, to these, or updating these structures, but, but in all reality, they could become habitable if they...
And Councilmember Litzter, the part of the situation was that is, as an example, if, say, someone has a 3,000-square-foot barn...
Sure.
That could turn into an ADU without anything we could do about it, other than bringing it up to building code standards, but the 3,000-square-foot frame could be legally converted to an accessory dwelling unit. So tonight's request would help ratchet down some of those size limits potentially. May not always do that, but it may require some additional considerations.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I just have one more question. And I appreciate that you put the summary of the voting of the Neighborhood Councils, and in the report to it gave us some of the questions that were answered and the responses. What wasn't there that I saw were the minutes from the Neighborhood Council meetings, which usually is also given to us, and that's, I realize, so that wasn't there, and so I wanted to understand, particularly Neighborhood Council Two, why they voted no, and it wasn't, maybe because the minutes weren't there, it wasn't clear to me what their rationale or concerns were. Do we have access to those minutes? Do you have a sense of why they would vote? And as I, as I looked at the vote, Neighborhood Council One also had several no votes, but the majority was yes. Neighborhood Council Two was, the majority was no, and so I want to understand their concerns and whether the changes that were made at the Planning Commission level addressed any of those concerns.
I think the Neighborhood Council minutes are on page 67, but they might be vague enough that you may not have your answer. I was at that Neighborhood Council meeting, Number Two. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion, in my opinion, and I think, you know, part of the discussion did goes toward, go focused toward the quantity of units. I can't speak for the council members, but I think they may have been surprised that there's an unlimited number of accessory structures you could have on your property currently. So I think, I think the, the vote might have leaned that way to begin with. So it was kind of, the conversation headed that way versus other parts of the ordinance. So that's just where that one landed, in my opinion.
I, I appreciate that, and in the future, I hope we have good minutes from those meetings, too.
Yeah, I think the attempt on page 68 is, it lists the questions...
It's a question summary, and it's not, and it's not attributed to which Neighborhood Council, it's just a general summary of all of the meetings, and normally, in the past, it's been by...
We can certainly provide the minutes.
And that's all right, I just wanted to understand better, so thank, thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor Protim Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of follow-on, and, and I think asking this question starts to alleviate some of the concern over density on a particular lot. Regardless of the size of the lot, what is the maximum coverage that can be on a lot for units between house and, and accessory unit?
There's no specific number for lot coverage, but what we do apply are development standards like setbacks, separation requirements. There is a rear yard lot coverage requirement of no more than 40%.
That's the number I was looking for, and I had it written down, I just wanted to get someone to say it out loud in the public record.
Well, and, and Councilmember Rhodes, the 40% is of the rear yard, the required rear yard, which is only the rear 20 feet of the property, so it doesn't do a whole lot, but it does some.
But if we're, if we have a very small lot, which, a letter that was submitted to Council prior to the meeting asked about this small lot, there's going to be a functional limit because of that, that setback.
That's correct.
I didn't see any type of slab requirements for this, or at least in the picture that I saw demonstrating the metal buildings that were allowed. Are there foundation requirements for this?
A building permit would be required for any structure over 120 square feet, and as part of that, they would require a foundation, but it would be reviewed under the Building Code.
Got it. And my last one for this question session. So this barn that exists, that gets converted into an ADU, that, that we can't say no about, they get to do it. Does that mean that if they had built an additional ADU, they could convert this one anyway, and we couldn't say no, and they end up with two?
No.
Oh, that's yes and no.
No, the, I think if you already have a detached ADU, at least under current law, state law...
Yep.
You can't have two, but in the case you only had one, then that...
Right.
That could potentially be...
So I can convert my barn, but I can't convert my barn and add an ADU, because my barn would be essentially then the...
That's my understanding of state law, as far as a second detached ADU.
Yeah, it's, it's, I love the state being so clear on their direction. Oh, I'm sorry, and then, on these design requirements, can HOAs supersede anything with the design requirements of the city?
HOAs would be able to implement their own design guidelines over the city.
And they could be more restrictive, but not less, if I remember.
They can be.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, those are all my questions for now.
And that covered all my questions. No, I think we're good. At this time, I would like to open the hearing for anyone in the council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, we have no public testimony for this item.
Staff isn't going to respond to any of those questions, so, the hearing is now closed. Any further comments or questions from the City Council members? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At a previous council meeting, I had put in a request on, and it sort of applies to what we're doing now, a situation in an animal overlay district where a barn was being permitted. I don't want to stop the proceedings to try and, and put that in at this point, because it seems like it would be a logical time to do that, but when can we expect to see some sort of thing brought back before council on that?
Yes, we have a, I have a memo in the works to address that, and I think we have a solution which can accommodate that.
And by...
April.
Nice, that was very definitive. You all heard that, right? Okay, thank you.
I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce Ordinance Number 1355, meaning portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code, SVMC, to establish development standards and authorize the Environmental Services Director to establish design guidelines for residential accessory structures, and a determination that the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second. Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 7, the Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
Councilmember Litzter.
Excuse me, I would like to pull Item 6 for a brief discussion, but would be willing to move the passage of Items 1 through 5 and 7 through 9, unless there are others.
Second.
Second. Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Councilmember Litzter, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and by the way, congratulations for the funds for the Boys and Girls Club, we appreciate what you're doing. Thank you, thank you. So Item 6 deals with our, basically, repair of our streetlights, and maybe because the two recent ones, even that are sited there, technically in my district, I think I became particularly aware of them, and so I guess my question is, Econolite really our only potential service provider? Obviously, we have a contract with them right now. I guess I was a little concerned that it took so long to repair the one on L.A. Avenue, and then even worse, I felt, was the one on Royal in front of the high school that had, that had students, in fact, it was so bad with that light that they stopped taking late attendance in the morning. The school had to change their policy because students could not get there on time, and I know that, and I drove, made the mistake of driving through right when school was getting out, and it was 20 minutes to get past the high school to get to Arringer from First Street. So, and as I understand, they got it fixed within a week, and I'm grateful, but it wasn't fixed a day or two later, it was, it took a week to be fixed, and as I understand, if there had been a problem with the casing, all bets were off, and it could have been much longer. And so I guess my concern and question is, is, are they our only option? Is there a way we can have things fixed quicker?
They are not the only option. I'm aware there's a few other traffic signal maintenance companies. In fact, we had a different company prior to taking on Econolite, but I believe the, the length of time that it took is, is, they, they are a busy company, and they had difficulty getting staffing out here, and sometimes the parts are, you know, hard to get or something like that, but we've talked to them several times about their response time, and we monitor them very closely, and if necessary, we'll go back out to bid for, and see what other companies might want to be interested in our city.
Is their response time standard in the industry? What, I mean, what is, what is expected? In my mind, we do it in-house, and we fix it the day it's broken. I mean, that's what we like to do when we can, when there's a problem. If there's a pothole, Rocky, you make it, take, take care of it the day we've discovered, right? So I...
Well, is that the standard time? I don't, I don't know. I think it depends on many factors, including, as indicated, staffing, availability of equipment, the degree of, of the problem that they have, and it, and it's a little more, as you can imagine, a little more complex than throwing asphalt in a, in a pothole, you know? Sometimes they have to, you know, they excavate, put in new conduit, pull new wires, it's just a, it can be a very time-consuming process.
I think the concern we had on the recent one, Crocker and, and Royal, was that it went down on a Monday, that was a holiday. We showed up on Tuesday, recognized the light was down, made a call to Econolite. I, I think the problem is that we didn't, we, you can take, you can approach it two different ways. One is, go fix it and send us the bill. That can be a blank check, you never quite know what you're gonna get at the end of the day.
Okay.
What, what took a day or two was for them to go out, analyze the problem, give us a quote, we had to agree on the quote, and then they had to schedule the work to be done. We took the second approach, so we knew we had at least an idea of what the cost was gonna be before they ever showed up and went out there, as opposed to just sending them out there and saying, "Go fix it." It, it's, it's better management that way, but I recognize in this particular instance, it was a bad location. I think the location exacerbated the problem.
Sure it did.
If it was anywhere else...
L.A. Avenue wasn't quite as bad as...
Well, yeah, if it was somewhere else in town, it may have been a different story, it wouldn't have been as bad of a traffic issue, so I think that contributed to it. But, but, you know, to Mr. Futawaki's point, there's no reason why we can't have a second company under contract, and you, like, you just approved a contract with three different engineering firms. We certainly could have two contracts with two signal companies, that we can certainly do that, if one's unavailable, we call the other.
Well, I would like to certainly explore that, just because I, I've just seen, yeah...
Yeah, okay.
This was, was very concerning to a lot of people.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. I think Rocky wants to talk as well.
I had a question as well, and I previously did get this answered, so I'm asking it for the benefit of, of... So Sci-Fi Networks had some damage caused to our lights, conduit camera operations. Is there insurance reimbursement in the future, or is that, is the city on the hook for the cost of the repair?
They're being billed for all the damages and cost of repair, so I don't know if we've been paid yet or not, but they are being paid, and, and that would be normal, anybody that damages any of our city facilities...
Right.
Would be billed for that damage.
Thank you.
So I will move passage then of Item 6.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 10A, City Council Member
Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll begin with Tuesday, March the 5th. I was fortunate to have a private tour of the YMCA. I understand that, that, that a couple of you've also had a chance to, to tour their facilities, just as we passed funding for the Boys and Girls Club... just as we passed funding for the Boys and Girls Club and what they do for needy childcare. I think YMCA serves the same purpose in many ways. And it was lovely to go take a tour of their facilities to see that their plans, their desires to expand and make it even more accessible to the community. And so anyway, if you haven't had a chance, I would encourage others on this body to go see what they're proposing. I do know that what they are doing in terms of building, or desire to build a gymnasium, may have a price tag of close to $7 million or so, and they're going to have to find out a way to pay for it. But I'm glad to see that they're putting that into our community and just very good thing going on there. On Thursday, March 7th, I attended the SCAG Joint Policy, or Joint Committee, whatever that was. I'm going to let you gentlemen, and since Mike was there at the head table, just, anyway, I'm going to let you discuss the voting that came out of that. But anyway, it was an interesting discussion for our community, for, it was, we were actually voting on, help me get the right vernacular. It was the. See, I knew that they could tell it, the SoCal Connect. Okay, P.R. anyway. There you go. So that was the report that was presented that we all voted on, and so, anyway. And they can give you more details about that. On Friday, March the 8th, I was at the Simi Valley Education Foundation Teacher of the Month presentation, where they recognized Chris Cuskey, who is 28 years teaching at Hillside Middle School, teaches social studies, eighth grade, history. I don't know how many trips he's, did your daughter have him? I don't, had him, I don't know how many trips he's taken to Washington D.C., but he truly, you can tell, has a love for history and love for our government. And I'm told that he walks through the halls with his students singing the preamble while playing the guitar, that he's, that they, anyway. He knows how to engage his, how to engage his students and get them involved, and so I just want to commend him. Also on that date, I attended the ribbon cutting to recognize Elements Massage on their 10-year anniversary here in Simi Valley. I think it's particularly memorable or recognizable because somehow I know that to survive through COVID, a time when people were not getting close to each other, that was particularly difficult. But they survived and have actually thrived, and so they were, it was a nice commemoration of their 10 years here in our community. On Monday, March the 11th, attended the Council on Aging with Councilmember Mike Judge. They gave a very good budget review, and they're certainly in a good position and doing good things with their funds. On Wednesday and Thursday, I attended both sections of the Every 15 Minute Program that was held at Simi High School. The crash simulation that was held at Stone Pitman, and then the next day, the recap and the film and the testimonials in the high school gym. And I just want to say what a powerful, wonderful program that is done here in the community. And I want, I want to first thank Mike Court, who oversaw it this year and just put so much time and effort into it, but want to, Chief Shores is here, I want to tell you what an outstanding job your team did in bringing that together and setting up the crash site. I will tell you that I learned, I've attended this several times, but this is, this is, maybe because the miking was particularly good. This is the first time I heard every word in, as he went through the DUI sobriety questions, you know? And I'm, anyway, it was an education to me, as I realized what was being asked. But it was just clearly, you could tell that it affected the students. It was just very, very impactful. And so thank you to all those who put in time and money and effort to make this such an educational moment for our students to recognize just the, just the potential awful, potential problems, potential what can occur in poor decision-making when driving while under the influence. So, anyway, it was just very, very well done, so thank you. Also on Thursday, March the 14th, I attended VCOG's meeting at Cal State Channel Islands. There, we heard from Gina Johnson, who's the Chief Probation Officer for the County of Ventura. And what I learned from her presentation, which I wasn't aware of, is that no longer do they, they technically use the term juveniles in their system. Yes, there's a juvenile detention facility, but just because that's what's always called. And Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding, but that now they house, the state has shut down their housing for young offenders, and that that juvenile detention facility will house young people up to the age of 26. So not, it's not just 18 and under. Young adults are also housed there and part of that population. That's, that's correct, so, okay, and Chief is telling me that I, that it was just something I was just not aware of. So it was definitely instructive for us, and thank you, Chief, for articulating exactly how that occurred and what that means. But I know that they strive very much to, I mean, they're supervised, but it just changes the dynamics very much. I recognize that. On Saturday, March the 16th, two days ago, I had the fun and privilege of going up to Simi Town Center and being there to host the greeting of the arrival of the Easter Bunny, Peter Cotton Till. And he came in on his e-bike and rode around this center court for two rounds, because that's how, in Simi Valley, that's how the Easter Bunny arrives. And then he went into a shop where they take photos, where you can get your pictures taken. And I, actually, it was, there were a lot of young families there, a lot of children were there for the Easter egg hunt. I just had to make a special commendation for Cindy Rowe of Inspired Dance Studio, who single-handedly did all the arts and crafts and put on the Easter egg hunts for the different age groups. And, yes, I was out there trying to teach the bunny hop without the correct bunny hop music. Anyway, so next time, we'll see if they have the correct music. But it was, it's just a reminder that that is, that is often a very vibrant place. And what I learned too, and I think it's important to recognize, is that there are 79, 80 owners of there at the Simi Town Center that have businesses there. And so, yes, we know that there's vacancies, et cetera, and things happening, but there are many there that are working and doing good work, so I just want to commend them. And that was really a lovely community gathering. And so, and yes, that was, Easter celebrated the day before St. Patrick's Day. And so that concludes my report.
Just curious, was it the real Easter Bunny or an imposter?
Well, you know, it was hard, I didn't ask for his ID. He looked very real, but hard to know.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 6th, I attended the EDC Executive Board Meeting. Did a lot of talking about all the different programs that we're currently involved in. We're almost done with our upskilling program, which was one of the ones, I think was one of the best programs we've been doing, which is where we're teaching computer literacy, starting from the beginning. Assemblymember Jackie Irvin got us a $5 million grant for that from the state, and they've pretty much met their goal and are going beyond it. And so now they're actually training the trainers. So the EDC program has been able to, has been able to teach other peoples. They're putting a curriculum together so that we will be able to share that out, which is a wonderful thing. So I'm very proud of that, and the EDC staff is awesome. On March 13th, I met with the amphitheater study company that we hired. Very interesting conversation. I was very open and honest with them and discussed some different varying ideas that the amphitheater could be used for that I hadn't thought of. And then I had a couple of ideas that I thought it might be worked for. So I think that company is going to do a great job in giving us a true feasibility study. I expressed my concerns in that we have a cultural arts center right now that's not being utilized as much as it could be. And so I want to make sure that we don't take away from that, that we, you know, coordinate the two and make sure they both get the good things going. On Saturday, I attended two different things. So our Simi Valley Town Center hosted the Rotary Student Exchange Program for Southern California. It was a two-day event, so we had people there from all over, Southern California mostly, Kern and then out to Kern. I have a, I call her my bonus daughter, granddaughter's going on exchange next year. But we had current, or past, present, and future Rotary Exchange students, and it was really kind of cool. One of the best ones I met, not best ones, the one I spent the most time with, young lady who went to Chile, and she lives right here in Simi Valley. So it was really pretty cool to talk to her and share her experiences. And it was nice for Rotary to bring all those different people from our area here to visit Simi Valley, so that's a good thing. I'm sure we got some TOT for that. And then the last thing is, on Saturday afternoon, I went to the Royal High School JV softball tournament, and I want to say Royal High School's JV team won the tournament, so very good. My sister's one of the coaches. So it was great to see, Camarillo was there. We played Camarillo, Granada Hills, who else did I say, other local schools. So it's great. That brought in other people here to our community. So both the high schools host softball tournaments. One does a varsity, and one does a JV. They both do a great job, bring a lot of people to visit our community, so. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wednesday, March 6th, I attended the SCAG EAC, or the Executive Committee, meeting prior to the Thursday meeting. Not too much came out of that. Some of the stuff at the Executive Committee, we pushed forward to the remote, or to the hybrid, or, not the hybrid, I'm sorry, the joint count, or the Joint Committee Meeting on Thursday. I'm sure Councilmember Rhodes has a report for that, so I'll let him do that. On Saturday, March, correction. Monday, March 11th, I attended the Council on Aging and listened to them go through their budget process. And like Elaine said, they're doing very well, and they're funded, and they're going to start doing some improvements around the senior center. On Tuesday, March 12th, I also talked to the companies doing the amphitheater feasibility study. We'll see what happens with that. On Wednesday, March 13th, I attended the Simi Valley Police Foundation Meeting. Tried to get back to do the Every 15 Minutes Program, but was stuck in traffic in the valley and couldn't make it. So I'm sorry I missed that. I try to go every year, and they usually do a very good job, like Councilmember Lutzter said. On Friday, March 15th, I attended the Elks Award Dinner that night. The reason I'm bringing that up is because one of our citizens, who's also a member of the Elks Lodge, Bill Klepper, was awarded the Outstanding Citizen Award from our Elks Lodge. So it was a very prestigious award for him to get. I was very proud. On Sunday, March 17th, I hope everybody had a St. Patrick's Day, and that's the end of my report.
May I approach him, Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, March 5th, I also had a phone interview with a consulting company tasked with the feasibility study for the amphitheater, and I think it's off to a great start. So I think that, as Councilwoman mentioned, that we are going to have a thorough feasibility study that will get us in the right direction. Also on Tuesday, the 5th, I had a Zoom conference call with the CFO of the Clean Power Alliance to discuss a resource adequacy contract where all the terms were redacted. And so I had the opportunity to look underneath the redacted parts and see what contracts are doing. I will tell you that the CFO came off of a personal, well, not vacation, maternity leave to make the call because apparently having someone actually ask the question, "What's underneath there," is interesting to the people that draw up the contracts, and they want to share. On Wednesday, the 20, no, the 6th, typo, I had lunch with Hana Youssef, Serpentantin of Simi Unified. And we had a wide-ranging discussion that revolved around ideas on how to communicate better what is happening in our schools. He was sort of seeking advice of how to get word out of what are the good things that are going on, and I gave him some advice. Thursday, March 7th, the two meetings, the one, the SCAG Joint Committee Meeting. The three committee meetings are held jointly in order to collectively vote on the final drafts of the, ready for the name? Connect SoCal 2024 Regional Transportation Plan slash Sustainable Community Strategy. And there's an acronym in there too, as well as the final Program Environmental Impact Report. And it was one of those bittersweet approvals because we are pretending that the budget is A-OK and nothing's going to go wrong, and because we don't have any other direction from Sacramento, and about half the funding is slated to be yanked, and we'll have to reinvent all of those programs and do it all over again. Immediately following that was the Regional Council Meeting, where we approved the draft budget of $377 million. See note about Sacramento, same, same deal. And then they released that draft work for public review. There was an informational report on how trucks and trains will move to electrification. Spoiler alert, it's not going to work, and at least not in the near future, as the unintended consequences of government over-aggressive mandates without research came to light. And a first example was the one prototype electric locomotive that they could get to run on their test tracks was supposed to go from point A to point B, made it about halfway, and turns out that the trains are so heavy, it was doing damage to the tracks. So other than ripping up infrastructure and not going to where they're supposed to go, it was a great test. That same day, Thursday, the 7th, I had, I attended the Clean Power Alliance Board Meeting, and we voted to support the contract that I just discussed earlier. And we also elected a new chair. I want to thank Dr. Gold for his many years of service as the outgoing chair. On Thursday, the 7th, that evening, I left on a business trip, first to Nashville and then to Shanghai. So I left Sunday at Shanghai, and because of time zone differences, I missed my birthday. I was over the Pacific almost the entire day of my birthday. I left on Sunday, and I arrived just short of Tuesday in Shanghai, so. I don't count. And then I returned from that trip this morning at 10:00. So are we adjourned? All right. Let's see, Thursday, March 7th, due to some miscommunication, I also attended the Clean Power Alliance remotely from Calabasas. Riveting conversation. The others that were in there at the Calabasas City Hall were like, "You're really going to stick around for this?" Let's see, Friday, March 8th, I spent the afternoon here taping the State of the City. So a good portion of the State of the City this year will be a videotape. I think it's going to be a lot more entertaining than listening to me drone on for an hour. But it was interesting, interesting process. I'm anxious to see it myself. And then that night, I attended the ViCA's statewide office holder dinner at Universal Studios, expecting some interesting comments from all these state office holders about what's going on and stuff. And I got there, and instead, it was an attempt, a poor attempt at entertainment. So I don't know. Let's see, on Tuesday, I had a meeting here with a gentleman from NASA to talk about cleanup of the San Luis Obispo Field Lab. I also have meetings planned in the future with Boeing and the Department of Energy as well. And then I'm also setting up private tours with all three organizations as well. If anyone else here on that dial would like to join me, just let me know, and I'll make sure. I really intended on being at the Every 15 Minute Program. I attended it last year and found it fascinating, and unfortunately, I had conflicts I couldn't do. Thursday, March 14th, I welcomed everybody at the opening night of the Simi Valley Police Department Citizens Academy. Neat program for people to get an inside look at our amazing police department. Neat program for people to get an inside look at our amazing police department. And then on Friday, Brian and I met with a group of individuals that had shown up at my town hall and had some, you know, questions that they wanted some, you know, more information than I could give them on the spot. And so I told them that I would follow up. And I'm a man of my word, I did that. And I think we had a good conversation. And I think I, you know, made a valiant effort trying to, you know, educate them as much as possible, so. With that, may I ask for any future agenda items? Yes?
Thank you. I do have one. It's not an agenda item, but I'd like an action to be taken by this board or consideration. As many of you may be aware, AT&amp;T is attempting to, basically, they're going over the CPUC, asking to no longer be required, to be required to provide copper, or to basically wired lines or copper landlines. Thank you. And the last two CPUC hearings are this Thursday. Basically, as I, in my limited understanding, is that it is standard that there's one provider that is required to provide it as an option. If they are removed this obligation, then there will not be anyone required to provide it, and likely it will no longer be available to our residents because it's not cost-effective and it's not a money-making entity. And I know that at our business, when I tried to put in a landline for our fax machine, it was quite expensive. Anyway, the options were very limited. So we have an older population, a lot of which use, still use landlines when, basically when power goes out and cell sites go down and there's no way of communication. Sometimes landlines are the only way the communication can be made to some people. And I think AT&amp;T should still be obligated or required to provide that to our residents. And I would like to ask if we can have a letter written and submitted in time for the Thursday on behalf of the council, or at least behalf of this body, in support of asking CPUC basically not to remove that.
Unless there's any objections, we can have a letter prepared and sent.
Any objection?
Thank you. I would very much appreciate it. And like I said, anyone that wants to register and speak, I believe Thursday, there's one or two, maybe one or five or six. I can send forth the information. But, so you can actually speak to that if you'd like. But thank you very much.
One item I just wanted to throw out, kind of as a warning flag, I guess more than anything, had a conversation with our representative on the Water Board. And he mentioned that there's something going on with the Metropolitan Water District.
Yes.
That is talking about these multiple, like I think, five steps of increases in water costs that is going to just be passed down through the line. And it's a substantial increase. And so I think that we need to look into that and, you know, see if there's some way we need to get involved in that.
We can provide, we'll provide some information to the council. We'll email you information on what the current proposal is. It still has many steps to go.
Right.
And we're continuing, staff and, we're all continuing to monitor where that's headed. But yes, there are large increases being proposed by Met.
Okay, so with that, I am going to adjourn with no memory this month. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, city staff, for attending the meeting. And you, gentlemen.